We're on air.
Okay, all right, the light is on and we are ready to get started here, folks, and welcome everyone this evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the Pledge Allegiance to the White?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we give the roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
All right, we do have a light agenda this evening, and first we have three proclamations for this month of April. And the first one is Child Abuse Prevention Month for April 2019. Whereas this April marks the 36th year of the U.S. Presidential Proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas each April Child Abuse Prevention Month activities are held in communities across the nation to raise awareness about child abuse and the need for the entire community to become involved. And whereas during the National Child Abuse Prevention Month, we renew our commitment to preventing child abuse and rededicate ourselves to working together to ensure all children have a bright and hopeful future. And whereas preventing child abuse is a neglect, and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, and health problems. And whereas abuse and neglect are far more reaching than you might imagine. No socioeconomic group is immune. Children of all races and ethnicities are victims of child abuse. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed through the partnerships of community groups that help support parents to provide a safe and nurturing environment. Child abuse is a total community problem affecting all levels of society, and the effects of child abuse need to be addressed by the entire community. Now therefore, I Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Albany and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to recognize and prevent child abuse. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 10th day of April 2019. And we have a lot of activities taking place this month in the community, and this Saturday will be one over at the courthouse. And Sarah, did you want to come and mention a little bit about the Saturday activities?
Thank you, and thank you for declaring April 2019 Child Abuse Awareness Month. On Saturday, April 13th, from 11:00 to 3:00, we will be having a family appreciation fair at the Lynn County Courthouse, which is our central display, which has 254 blue pinwheels, the symbol for Child Abuse Awareness Month. And 254 represents the total founded cases of abuse and neglect in Lynn County in 2017. We'll have guest speakers, including Mayor Sharon Kenopa and executive directors from local abuse, child abuse intervention and prevention agencies. We'll have a performance from South Albany Dance Team, activities, resource tables, and a fun family event, hopefully with lots of sunshine. Thank you.
Wonderful. Yep, and I haven't even seen the weather prediction, have you?
Not looking great.
Oh, all right, thank you so much. Okay, next is Distracted Driving Awareness Month for April 2019. Whereas the City of Albany holds the health and safety of its citizens as a paramount concern, and whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers engage in activities that divert their attention from the road and their primary task of driving, such as texting, talking on a cellphone, interacting with passengers, listening to loud music, and reading. And whereas smartphone use, because it distracts a driver's visual, manual, and cognitive abilities, is especially dangerous for the driver and others on our roadways. And whereas 70% of Americans admit to using their smartphone while driving to text, check email, access social media, and use their phone and video tools. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports that more than nine people are killed and over 1,060 people are injured each day in crashes that are reported to involve a distracted driver in the United States. And whereas the Oregon Department of Transportation reports that a crash involving a distracted driver in Oregon occurs every two and a half hours. And whereas Oregon has distracted driving laws that prohibit the use of mobile electronic devices while operating a motor vehicle. And whereas distracted driving is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable. And whereas in order to reduce the number of crashes as well as improve drive safety, Albany motorists should dedicate themselves to adopting the maintaining safety behavior while behind the wheel. Now therefore, I Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2019 to be Distracted Driving Awareness Month in Albany and call upon all residents to commit themselves to distraction-free driving behavior. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 10th day of April 2019. So we read this proclamation before, so when I ended up seeing it, reading it for this coming on the agenda, and I thought, well, how would I have known a year ago I would be a person that's a recipient of a distracted driver? So last year, I was, my husband and I were hit by a very, it was a traumatic car wreck, and I have permanent disabilities from that car wreck, and it was from a distracted driver. So I'm kind of pleased to see many people here tonight, to really kind of think about whenever it is using, you know, when other people are using their phones, if they get in a wreck, it's not just themselves are hurting, they're hurting other people, and it could impact them for the rest of their life, too. So hopefully someday, there'll be some technology that there won't be any sort of way of being distracted while driving, but it's just something to kind of think about and kind of spread that word. So, thank you, folks. Next is another proclamation for April, and this is one that's wonderful for us to all think about for our future, and this is Earth Day, April 22nd, 2019. Whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles. And whereas all people regardless of race, gender, income, or geography have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth. And whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must afford and take action to create a green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges. And whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns. And whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. And whereas Earth Day is the beginning of a new year for the environmental stewardship commitments and to implement sustainability efforts. And whereas let it be known that Albany, Oregon encourages its residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and commit to building a sustainable and green economy. Now therefore, I Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2019 to be Earth Day in Albany, Oregon, and I encourage all residents to support green economy initiatives and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 10th day of April 2019. And I do believe we have coming up at Farmer's Market, I think it is on that Saturday before would be some, oh Lisa, do you have, you can mention it, she's got all the information on that. Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association, and I believe you are speaking toward the procession of the species.
Yep.
People of all ages and walks of life, the young, old, tall, or short, or fast walkers, slow crawlers, the furry, the feathered, and the fannisful are invited to participate in the annual procession of the species, a favorite rite of spring in downtown Albany. Earth Day information booths open at the Farmer's Market at 9:00 a.m. with activities, face painting giveaways, and Claudia the Giant Chinook salmon will be there. You can walk through Claudia and learn about the life cycle of a salmon. At 9:45 a.m., gather in front of the Lynn County Courthouse at 4th and Broad Alvin to join the parade. And again, this is Saturday, April 27th, procession of the species in conjunction with the Farmer's Market, and there are many people involved in this from the city, Park and Rec, Public Works, Albany Visitor Association, the Downtown Association, and other folks as well.
Wonderful, yep. And since we've got some preschool families here, so, you know, mention to the kids to see if they want to get dressed up and walk in the parade, it's a fun event.
And Park and Rec will also be offering a place to make headbands, I believe, before the parade.
Yes, oh, thank you, thank you, Lisa. And I think Debbie Richards, is she still here?
I'm here.
Are you, yeah, because you're part of the...
Yes, I think we'll be making headbands that are nature-related for kids who don't have a costume or a mask.
Oh, okay.
They'll want to be in the procession.
Oh, that'd be great, it's fun, yeah.
It is fun. And it will, it will sun the sun.
It better by then, yeah, all right. Thank you, Lisa.
And then I have business for the public when you get to that.
Oh, you do, okay, thank you, all right. Thank you, Debbie. Okay, next is Business From the Public, and is there anyone, yes, Lisa?
And then you can get everybody else in the room. Again, Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association, and I wanted to invite everybody to Downtown Restaurant Week. That is coming up April 22nd through 28th. This is the fourth annual event. We started with eight or nine restaurants, and now we're up to 20 restaurants participating in Restaurant Week. Each restaurant will offer three menu items at a price point of $10. So whether you go to what would typically be a date night restaurant, or whether you go to one of our bakeries, they'll all have a combination of things that you can taste and enjoy, from bites to baked goods. So again, that is April 22nd through 28th, all throughout downtown Albany. And I have newsletters for anyone in the audience who'd like to have one, they're also available on our website.
Okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you, Lisa. Anyone else from Business From the Public, yes? So you'll need to state your name and spell your last name, furnish your address, please.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Duboe. D as in dog, U, B as in boy, E A U. I'm a longtime member of Albany, I've lived here for over 30 years. I've also taught in Albany, I taught for a number of years at Greater Albany School District and for Lynn Benton Community College. I have taught children and youth and adults of all ages in this community. I'm here tonight to ask you to please consider keeping Maple Lawn. It's an important school. Early childhood education is the beginning of knowledge for so many children. And when you speak about preventing child abuse and having education for all, places like Maple Lawn are instrumental in making our community a better place and helping all of us. Children of all kinds can go there and feel welcome, everyone from my grandson to other people's children. It's such an important place, and they're so kind and giving, and I hate for us to lose such an important part of our community. So please, please consider keeping our school, it's very important, makes Albany a nicer place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Yeah. So there's one thing I will want to mention, it's, I do hope most all of you do come when it comes to our budget meetings that start, because it's a 14-member budget committee that makes the recommendation to the council of how the budgets should be set. So, and the council just heard last week what the budget was, so, and the budget committee, so this was kind of, this is sort of the beginning of the process for establishing the budget for the year, which will be a two-year budget this time, so, so it won't be finalized until close to the middle of May on that. So there is, we do have some time before it's finalized, but I do hope that you also are here to advocate when it comes to the budget committee.
And how can they find out when that is?
We have all of those dates on our website, yeah, all the dates are on our website for those upcoming meetings.
And people know about the website.
Mm-hmm, yep, mm-hmm, okay.
They know that date.
Yeah, okay, all right.
My name is Vicki Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I am a speech and language pathologist, and I also work with kids that have head injuries in the Early Intervention and Early Childhood Special Education Program. Excuse me. I have been blessed to have been at Maple Lawn for 22 years, working as a speech therapist. It has been a phenomenal experience, and when I found out that there was a possibility of this school closing, to say I was shocked is an understatement. We have had children go through this program for even more than 22 years. Of the 18 students in the class, five of them are special needs. The emphasis of this program is on social skills, how to get along with others, how to share, how to be tolerant, how to prevent abuse, how to be kind to one another. There are very few programs around like this. As a matter of fact, in Albany, there are none. We have no integrative preschool programs except Maple Lawn. The group of women that have been there pretty consistently for 22 years that I've been there, Debbie Richards, Denise Baumgartner, Jane Long, have spent hours learning how to work with special needs children, how to integrate programs that are the latest for how kids need to learn. We integrate a program called Positive Behavioral Instructional Supports, which is how to positively teach children how to be a friend, how to be safe, how to be a worker, how to get along. The thought of this program not being there in the future is detrimental to our children, it is damaging. We no longer have preschool programs that focus on social skills. With the new trend toward full-day kindergarten and academics, we're not teaching those social skills like we used to in kindergarten. Kindergarten used to be about going to school, learning to follow directions, how to be in a group, how to listen to a story, how to ask for a turn, and now kindergarten is focused on ABCs, counting, writing, and our preschool programs are doing double time to make sure that the kids are ready to go learn by knowing their alphabets and counting. It's, the focus is on academics. And we have one school remaining here, but the emphasis is on social skills. So when you talk about child abuse prevention, this is where it starts. It's a cycle, it has to start somewhere, and we are starting now with our preschool children, ages three to five. And it would be horrible to lose that problem, and it seems like there should be some way to put together a committee to look at ways to fundraise, to keep this program, or to look at other things in the budget that are not as detrimental, that will not be damaging to families and children where you can cut money.
Thank you, Bethany. Okay, sir, anyone else, yes?
My name's Amida Larson, L-A-R-S-O-N, and I am a resident of Albany. So I am a parent of a current student and a past student, and hopefully a future student. I moved to Albany five years ago and was looking for a preschool to enroll my oldest, and I was suggested for Maple Lawn. There was a waiting list, if that tells you how desired this preschool is. So I ask, if this program is so in high demand, why should it be considered to be closed? I understand budgets and as costs increase, but I think, and there could be other ways to get the funding that we need. The teachers at Maple Lawn are very passionate about the students, and they care about their individual progression. This would be a really big loss to our community. So I have some suggestions potentially on ways to help save Maple Lawn. I urge to, as we look at, as you guys look at the budget, to look at possibly urban renewal, as I know this area of the town could benefit from that fund. Secondly, being able to have time to apply for grants. Currently, six weeks is not enough time to be able to get grants to continue this education program. Most of them take months to apply and then receive funds and whatnot. So the six weeks is just not enough time. Let's see here. Also, just a minor note, the USA Today had indicated that Albany was the worst, number 25, the worst city for kids to be raised in, due to the lack of educational opportunities in our city. So do we want to continue with that or do better? So if we close Maple Lawn, it would make it worse. I think it is important that we keep it, and I encourage the council members to visit Maple Lawn, and anybody else who has questions about what goes on there, to see the good work that they do. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So how many are wanting to be speaking? How many won't? Okay. I just, I just want to mention, one of our council rules is no clapping, so I know it's encouraging, but that is part of our rules of our, of our council chambers, so.
Also, Mayor, is that the last person to give their address?
Oh, okay, yep, and make sure you give us your address, too.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yes, hi, my name is John Jones, and this is my granddaughter, Margot, and she wanted me to ask you guys to consider...
Can you get your address, too?
Oh, 1187 Northwest 21st Street.
Okay, thank you.
And she's want me to tell you that she has been wanting to go to Maple Lawn her entire life. And she was really concerned that this opportunity may not be available to her, so she wants me to ask you to please consider not closing Maple Lawn, because she really looks forward to going there.
Okay, all right, yep, well, thank you, sweetie.
Should've brought some puppy dogs, too.
Okay, geez, yeah.
Hi, my name is Sheena Dickerman, my address is 3750 Grand Prairie Road, Southeast.
You've got laryngitis?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. A librarian with laryngitis.
My name is Andy Friedman, I'm the Field Services Director with Oregon HAFSME. I'm not an Albany resident, but because Sheena lost her voice, we decided it would make sense for me to address the city council. I'm the Field Services Director for Council 75, and as the representative of the employees of the City of Albany, we are disappointed with the city management and how they've handled the budget planning with regards to the closing of Maple Lawn, which serves special needs children. The city management has known about the shortfall in the Maple Lawn program for quite some time, but city management has not effectively pursued potential revenue sources for this program. City management should be working with employees to identify and pursue revenue enhancement solutions. We also believe that employees, we also believe that we can identify specific cost-saving solutions, including savings from a more effective health plan that would better serve employees. The employees of the City of Albany work hard to provide many important services to residents, they have knowledge that can help, but management needs to involve them. There's still time for the city to be collaborative, but you need to direct your management team to work with us to find solutions that will work for city residents.
All right. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Debbie? Or, there was a gentleman behind you, too. Yeah.
David, Mayor, city council, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Albert Salinas, S-A-L-I-N-A-S. My address is 40, excuse me, 4076 Edgewater Drive, Northeast. I'm here to speak about the closing of the Maple Lawn school. I've had the pleasure of working for two Oregon Secretaries of State, the recently passed Dennis Richardson, and the newly appointed Bev Clarno. Both of these individuals are well-known at advocating for spending money responsibly. When we think about the budget, I request that you guys think about doing this responsibly. When thinking about the ramifications of closing the school, we have to think about our future children, our future mayors, our future city council members, and think about how we can responsibly educate them. Two of my children have went to this school, and teacher Alicia and the staff have done an amazing job at helping them get a love for learning that I didn't know was possible. So I request that you guys please find a way to keep this school open, and thank you very much for your time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Debbie?
Hi there, my name is Joni Shook, and I actually live in the Jordan area of Syo. Do you need my address?
Yes.
38277 Lulay Road in Syo. And my two daughters, Emmylou and Maggie, went to Maple Lawn for three years in 2010, 11, and 12. I'm just a mom, I don't have any degrees or any numbers to crunch, I just wanted to tell you that they are better individuals now for having gone to Maple Lawn than they ever would have been. And we traveled the 24 miles each way three times a week after trying other preschools in our area. We actually left one day and went, tried another preschool in our area, and we lasted 40 minutes, and I called my husband, and I said, "I need to get my children back to Maple Lawn. I don't care how much gas is." And it was the best decision I ever made, and I just, as just a mom, I'd like you to please consider keeping Maple Lawn open. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Kollen, K-O-L-L-E-N. My address is 5052 Caribou Court, Southwest Albany, Oregon. I have two kids with special needs, and when I was looking for a place to buy a house, this really wasn't the town I was going to consider. It was someone's testimony when I was asking random strangers what they thought about their town, that talked so highly about Maple Lawn that made me change my mind. They talked about how amazing this program was to this community that made me reconsider, hey, maybe I should go look at Albany. It's been one of the best moves I have made. My son, he can be, really be understood when he talks, and he has so much confidence, he just goes out there and plays, he's in kindergarten now, and he plays it up, and he has so many friends that he tries to tell me about, even though I can't understand what he's saying. He just enjoys himself to no other. I have a daughter who's being observed or evaluated for autism right now, and she hates interacting with peers, and she's starting to. And she's doing a really good job, working, starting to work in groups, and she's come a long way. And I just don't know how a city that's being announced as the 25th city, worst city to raise a family in the U.S. can cut such an amazing program. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Okay, all right. No, actually, the council's used of land use hearings. When one person comes up to comment, they can be on for an hour, yeah?
I won't be that long, I promise. I'll be as succinct as is reasonably possible. Good evening, I am Jessica Nielsen, N-I-E-L-S-E-N. I live at 1198 Northwest 22nd Street here in North Albany. I'm very fortunate to have my son in a Maple Lawn program currently, I'm very hopeful that my daughter will also get to enroll. And I got to say, Maple Lawn was a major variable when it came to choosing we were going to raise our children. raise our children. We moved from the Portland area to Albany, knowing Maple Lawn was an available program, and knowing that Oregon, you know, public schools are doing full-day programs. So, we wanted our kids to have those social skills, you know, that, that early education opportunity that they wouldn't otherwise get. Um, I have two concerns tonight. One is that this is coming up so late when the community, I'll be honest, I don't even know how to wrap my head around dealing with the deficit of this degree or how I can personally help. That's my first concern. It seems late in the game. My second concern is what happens two years after this, and two years after this, and two years after this. I really hope to see you guys prioritize with early childhood education. This is so significant for our area, and this program makes such a big impact in our community. I will take Maple Lawn any day over concerts in the park. Sugar Ray is great. I'd rather fund Maple Lawn, and I think most of us feel the same way, so. Thank you guys for tolerating us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Cop, spelled C-O-P-E. My address is 4100 Edgewater Drive, Northeast. And I am here on behalf of my daughters. They are two and a half, and hopefully future, um, enrollees of Maple Lawn. They are twins, and, um, Naomi, my daughter, has Down Syndrome. And I want them to be in the same class together because they've never been apart. And I promised I wasn't going to cry. Um, and I have done so much research, and I'm here to advocate to keep this school open because this is the only preschool in Albany that reserves slots for children with special needs. The only other ones are in Corvallis. And I live here. And it is so important that we advocate for our children, and to have typical children integrated with children with special needs is such an amazing experience that they won't get anywhere else. And it's just so important. I can't, I, obviously, you guys can tell how many people are here, um, to voice that opinion, but I'm, I'm here for the special needs kids that need it. They need to be integrated with those typical children, and these women do such an amazing job of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Samantha. Okay, Debbie?
I bring in my thoughts.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Debbie Richards, and my address is 1303 Southwest 10th Avenue, Albany, Oregon. Um, and these are, this is the Maple Lawn preschool staff, so if I could introduce them, I would appreciate it so much. Um, this is Denise Bumgarner. She's been part of the program for 23 years. Randy Schuler's been part of the program for three years. Ashley Lawson's been part of the program for five years. Alicia's been part of the program for seven, about six years. Um, she was an assistant for us, and then she, um, moved up and started our Ready, Set, Go class, which is a pre-K class for those kids who miss that kindergarten cutoff. And, um, she does an awesome job getting them ready for, um, full-day kindergarten, and parents are very appreciative of that class, as are, um, school teachers in our area. Um, when the schools, kindergarten teachers and special ed teachers hear that, um, a student has come from Maple Lawn preschool, they almost have a sigh of relief that these kids are ready. We know they're not going to need that extra attention that some of those other children would have with behavioral issues or just not having the social skills that they need to be successful in kindergarten. So, that's, um, this is the staff. A couple interesting facts about Maple Lawn. Um, the program actually has been in existence for 40 years. Um, during the time, that time, we've probably had 25, 25, excuse me, 100 children through our program. Currently, we enroll, there are 89 children enrolled in the program with 20 of those kiddos being, um, special needs kids. Um, we had open registration this Monday, it seems like a year ago. But, um, we had parents, even though they know that the possibility of the school is going to close, we currently have three classes full, four classes full, and, um, on those classes, we have a waiting list, and our one Friday, Thursday, Friday afternoon class is always the last to fill up, so there's still openings in that class. So, parents have faith that this program will continue. So, thank you for taking the time to listen to everybody, and enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Can I, can I speak?
Yes, uh-huh.
I'm Denise Bumgarner. My address is 1623 Northwest, um, 17th. Uh, I wanted just to speak a little bit more. We, I know Vicki talked a little bit of the special needs part of it. Um, I do want to assure you that we do do the alphabets and all of those things. We do get them, uh, prepared for kindergarten. But I wanted to tell you what happens inside the classroom when you integrate the, um, typical kids in with the special needs kids. We've had kids that have autism, speech problems, we've had medical fragile, we've had, um, we've had the Down Syndrome. And what happens is the interactions between them are just priceless. The typical kids learn to be tolerant and accepting. The special needs kids, they have a role model that is something for them to rise to. And they often do. They often are, when they are inter, integrated into our classrooms, they, it, it changes their perspective, and they go beyond many times what we expected. So, I, I guess our purpose in being here tonight is just so that you know why we want to fight. We, um, Debbie and I, being the longest ones there, we have, um, spent a long time, uh, developing this program and changing with the times. And, um, as the district changed and the schools required more, we, we changed. And, um, honestly, um, I believe it's probably one of the most, um, important programs that the city runs. And also, I wish, and I invite you to come see us. Um, in fact, the, the irony of it is that a few weeks ago, I told Debbie, I said, um, "We should invite the council to come see what we do," because we're kind of a hidden gem, and, and people don't really realize what we do do. So, if you want to come, just contact us. We'd love to show you what we do. We'd love to show you our classrooms. Um, but I think that you should be proud. You should be proud of, of what you offer. And, uh, we are, and we're, we thank you for giving us the time tonight.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I'm, I'm really pleased that everyone is here tonight, because it would be really nice to be, you know, when it comes to our budget meetings, to kind of be here and really see everything, all the programs of the city and where all those resources come from, but to kind of help us out with the process. So, usually, when it comes to our budget meeting, we, the last several years, there's been no citizens that have come. And it's usually about 10 hours, um, total that the Budget Committee goes through of all, um, you know, going through all the programs and all the funds. So, I welcome you to be able to come and, and, and see for yourself, and then give us your thoughts and ideas, too. A lot of people, it's, you know, we, it looks like a lot of money that we have in, in, you know, the city funds. And it is easy to say, "Okay, why not divert some from this program to another?" But if you add up the police and, um, our property tax revenues, because that's our main source of revenues, it does not even fully fund police and fire services. It takes all of the resources for all city programs. So, that's where then we, you know, the Budget Committee, the council has a challenging piece to get the budget balanced, and then if we're going to bring in more revenues, resources, where's it going to come from? This would be great to have everybody see, you know, well, if there's going to be, if we're going to have to be going out, say, for a utility fee for maybe parks and recreation programs, or having to go for another levy, to have everybody help us out with that, you know, being that extra voice, too, because a lot of times, citizens don't want to hear from any of our voices. You know, they want to be able to hear from other people also. So, I think this would be really great to, you know, help us out throughout this process and, um, and be able to see, you know, and give us your ideas, too, by seeing where all the, um, funds are, all the programs, and give us those suggestions would be very healthy for us, so. Okay? Alright, thank you.
I just wanted to echo what, what the mayor said. Uh, as she said earlier, we just heard about this a week ago, so we're, it's all news to us as well. Uh, but it would be helpful to see you next month, because you're looking at half the Budget Committee, basically. And it's, it's good information, and it's important information, and, um, not only do the other budget people need to hear this, but at the same time, we would have the department heads here that can explain some of these things. Um, we just don't have the information yet, so, uh, it, it will come out, but, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The parents will be seeing you.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Okay, um, that's still under business from the public. Anyone else that has another item to bring forward? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you, folks. Um, council, you do have an adoption of your consent calendar. This is on both pages, so this is one, two, and three. And if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
Um, no, I was just wondering, um, I'd seen on Paul's point that we had a lot of, some water rescues and stuff like that. I was kind of hoping that we had the party here, but, um, I guess we don't, I was just seeing if they could give us a report of what's going on and stuff, but I guess not.
I wonder if Captain Heinrich knows. Did you know mu, much about that water rescue this afternoon?
I know a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, it'd just be kind of nice to, to hear what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that your Bailey wife?
I know, I know.
You know the scene a little bit that he knows?
More than we know.
Typical. Um, we had, uh, two homeless individuals that were out in the Simpson Park area camping overnight, and when they got up this morning, it got, you know, light enough for them to look around, they realized they'd been, uh, trapped, uh, on an island. So, a report ended up getting made, and the fire department was able to get out there and get them off the island and get them back to safety. So, that's the, the reader's digest.
Is that the same thing that happened in Corvallis?
They had another homeless person in Corvallis they had to rescue.
Yeah. They rescued her and then gave her two tickets.
Yeah, put a tent up on the peninsula and woke up on an island.
Yeah, sounds like the same scenario.
Okay, well, thank you for-
Did they get cited for illegal camping?
I do not believe that they got cited.
Corvallis, yeah.
I have it on my conscience.
Technically, they were in Millersburg.
Thank you, very much.
Oh, it's in Millersburg, yeah. Send Millersburg a bill.
I'm good.
Yeah, alright, is that it, Bessie? Okay, Bill, anything?
Um, I will not be at the work session April 22nd.
Okay.
And my wife's having hernia replaced.
Hernia? Oh, my gosh, you guys.
It's my turn to take it.
Way too much snow skin in your younger years.
So, wow. She might be a pretty tough patient in those.
She's a teacher.
Put up with me for two knees, now it's my turn.
She can, she can make up for all the whining that she probably heard you do.
It's, it's tough getting old, our old bodies, yeah. Uh, okay, Marilyn, did you get that written down, too? Okay. Right, Dick, anything?
No.
Okay, Rich?
Actually, a, uh, an explanation. Um, last meeting, I, well, I got a phone call from a guy that he didn't understand why I didn't want to talk to the union. Um, and staff does not work for us. Staff works for Peter. And staff, our staff deals with the union. I don't deal with the union. Um, unions, by their very form, uh, are exclusively worried about their members first, not the rest of staff. So, I am, I've got people who are 15, 20,000 constituents that I worry about, and some of those are employees, and a much smaller number are union employees. So, I'm not going to deal with a guy who says he is representing a piece of the group that I am supposed to represent. I'm going to represent them, not the guy that wants to talk for him. That's the reasoning behind it. Anyway, Peter sent everybody the link to Seattle is Dying. I hope you, you watched that. I watched it three weeks ago or so, and then I watched it again, and it occurred to me that the points that they were making are something that are happening throughout our nation. It's like we're becoming, instead of being a, a government of laws, not a government of men. We are now being more government of men. Uh, there are people who have special privilege. You just look in the news, I mean, the, the guy in Chicago who, who ran the Chicago Police through a whole bunch of stuff and pretty much got a little bit of a tap on the hand, um, those types of things. And that's the same thing that that Seattle is Dying says in other ways. Uh, the people who are there basically just blow off the police. "You can't do anything to us. You can't, you know, we're not going to worry," you know. I mean, and I, I am cognizant that the homeless people we're talking about are a very small group of people. I mean, most of the homeless are regular folks who had something bad happen. But, you know, there's that little group that just will not be told, that will not follow the rules, or they're drug addicted, or et cetera. Um, anyway, I would encourage, if you haven't, see it again. I would encourage us to put the link for that on the website. Um, I mean, when Peter gets back, you know, talk to him about that, see if, what he thinks about that, because, uh, I think it's eye-opening for a lot of folks. It certainly was for me when I watched it the first time.
I thought it was real good, and before I watched this video, you know, a month or two ago, uh, Portland had the opportunity to buy that Montano County Jail that was built and never used, and talked about putting some homeless and people that need some help out there and so forth and so on. I, I think Portland really missed the vote by not jumping on that. And some of the comments I heard from council people, well, that, well, we'd be so far away from the services, even that they need mental health and that type of thing.
That's exactly what they need, though.
Well, exactly. And in that Seattle is Dying, when it gets towards the end of what they're doing in Rhode Island, it's like, this is exactly the kind of program. I think it was MAT or MAP program that, where they got them on methadone or whatever, that, you know, like I said, I mean, I take blood pressure medicine every day. These people have to take methadone every day, but it's, it's, it's a solution that's working. And, uh-
I, I agree, because I, um, when Peter sent the link, you know, I saw the front of it with just all of the tent camp garbage, just like, "Oh, you don't need to convince me." You know, this, I just, you know, you know me, don't enable homelessness, but get them into working with programs. So, I watched it last night. Man, I couldn't get away from it. It's an hour long. I recommend every, everyone to watch that video. So, because basically, that's what's going to happen if we turn our heads away from illegal tent camping and, um, homeless living in public spaces. This is what's going to happen, because that's what happened to Seattle. But for, for them, it costs them $1 billion last year in cleanup cost. A billion in that town for cleanup cost. I don't want that to, and we've been absorbing a lot of cost in cleaning up camps here. You know, we just had that one, um, you know, north of the Water Tower on 34th Street. Didn't even know that had been there, and the dumpster cost was $4,100. I mean, we have absorbed a lot of cost, you know, on just cleaning up the camps, and it's, and, and looking with that video, it shows that a lot of the homeless that are down and out, losing their, you know, lost a job or lost their housing, they're the ones working with the shelters, because they want to move back in towards, um, you know, getting a roof over their head. But what you see off this video is a lot of, and I hate to say, but it's a lot of the homeless that we have today out in the tent camps, they are addicted to drugs. They're addicted to alcohol. And at least for that, um, you know, Seattle is Dying video, they brought the solution towards the end, and the solution is to get them off the drugs. And so, in, um, was it New Hampshire or Rhode Island?
Rhode Island, yeah.
So, they sent in, so they, um, expanded with their corrections facility to get this sort of treatment, um, you know, kind of a rehab, um, place going. I think our state needs to look at that. I think Washington needs to look at it, and across the U.S., of really focusing on getting those facilities up and running, so.
Well, it's, it's not just that the state needs to. I mean, we have Eugene to the south, Salem to the north, who have that exact problem. Portland has, well, Portland just lets Antifa run around and abuse people, because they don't want to deal with it. Um, and it needs, everybody needs to do it much the same time, so you don't get the, "Oh, gee, they're doing something over there, or let's-" let's go help them. And so we end up getting, getting a whole bunch of people from someplace else that, yeah, they need help, but it's on us instead of on the other people that have them around too. Anyway, it just, that's all I had, just.
No, I'm glad you brought it up, because it was a very, very well done video. So I just hope more people can be able to see, and I'd like to even, I mean, everybody get it out on your Facebook pages and get people to really spend the time to, you know, go through that video. Because this is when you're enabling somebody to stay homeless. You're actually harming them. And this is what they could end up being, you know, in some of the situations that you see in Seattle. I saw it a year ago, exactly a year ago. We were in downtown Seattle at the Marriott. And homeless was all over the streets there. And we were waiting for a bus that was to take us to a wedding. And it was at the cathedral. And we're in front of the motel. And so here's homeless coming up, trying to ask people for money. And everybody just stood there like they were in a different world or a different dimension. And, you know, and of course me, I'm like, you need to go work at the shelters, you know, you need to go work with them. And it was just, it was so sad to see that. And then there was somebody out our window. It was a very ugly blighted alley. And I videotaped a person that was homeless. I watched him giving himself the drugs, watched him defecate, watched him looking around. It was almost like he was a zombie going through that, you know, that alley. It was so sad to see that. And it was pouring down raining. And it's like, why would you enable someone to stay homeless when you're actually harming them? So instead of that person, to get them to work with the shelter. But it's sad. It's sad to see. And now you can see people up in Seattle that are getting very upset with it. They're being able to, seeing how their community is being transformed to a community that they're not proud of. So I recommend everyone to watch that video if you haven't. So I'll get off my soapbox here when it comes to this issue.
People raise their hands in these forums, so I'll excuse me.
Yeah, actually, on this part, it's not, but go ahead, yes.
Hi, since I've already broken the rules. I've actually been a nurse for ten years in the Portland area and I work extensively with the homeless population. There is excessive access to drug rehabilitation facilities, available methadone and suboxone and other opioid agonist versus agonist therapies. My only point to emphasize this is that the availability of accessible mental health services is a major issue in this area, as well as the Portland area, getting those people that don't know how to get off the street to the areas. So Seattle is dying is a wonderful documentary, so I would start people watching. There's a lot more in depth that goes into the mental health aspect of things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree. Right, and that's what we're saying, they need to be able to work with the agencies, you know, that can be able to assist them. But some of them don't want to, but yeah. I know, thank you. Okay, all right, Rich, sorry, we kinda added on to your, to your item.
I was just gonna start this little thing.
Well, you know, when it comes to homeless issues, I can go on and on, so, okay, yeah, Alex?
So I want to thank you for coming to the African American Youth Leadership Conference. It was very successful this year. LBCC venue was a little small. We had to turn away eighteen schools. So it was a great turnout. We had over three hundred and seventy children and their chaperones. But one of the things that did happen is that Counselor Jenkins from Corvallis and I did a thing on public service. Our workshop was on public service. We had two groups of sixth, seventh and eighth grade children. And some of the things that they shared with us was tremendous. And I'm gonna send the information to Marilyn, but one of the things that one young lady shared with us is that there is no help for young girls when sexual assaults happen. And that was her opinion. She stated they give away condoms to schools in sixth and seventh grade, eighth grade, but there was no counseling for ill boys for their behavior. Another thing just pointed out about single use plastics, they talked about homelessness. One young lady admitted she was homeless, living in her car. So it's a real issue. Second thing, and I'll share that information with everybody here. The second thing, I went down to the Emerald Village and had a great time just learning about that village. It was mind boggling to me that other communities haven't adopted, or at least thought about adopting, similar practices. When I was done with that, I met with two city counselors from Eugene and they shared what they've been doing with Opportunity Village and the Emerald Village and projects that they've done. Center for Court Innovation, Community Court, Lane County Shelter Feasibility Studies. And they provided me with a lot of information that we could look at and share amongst ourselves to hope come up with some ideas on solving some of these homeless issues. I think that, you know, being a novice or somebody who's learning this from a fire hose at this time, I'm finding out a lot of wonderful programs that we could probably talk about or discuss with staff level or with other counselors. And so with the, with my education in this process, I find that there's a lot of ways that Albany can, you know, rally the public, get people involved in the community, organizations, religious organizations, to help the homeless situation. And I met with the Salvation Army and they have a program that people, they have stickers that they put on trash cans that direct people to go to them for food versus eating out of the trash can. So I've invited them to come speak with us, either at a working section or next to the council, to bring an example of what that would look like for Albany, 'cause it's no cost to us. It's just stickers on trash cans that direct people to go to get food from Salvation Army. So it's been a wonderful learning process and it's continuing, hopefully continue to work with you guys and the staff and organizations to make Albany continue to be a great place.
I'm glad you went down, you know, you did a wonderful on that conference yesterday. I was amazed on how many students had came, you know, 'cause I didn't know what the venue actually was about and, you know, what the program was. So thank you so much. I did go down to Emerald Village and toured it about a month ago. And then I had been up, actually up to, was it Keelan Village, the one up in Portland, the Right to Dream Two, you know, homeless camp up there. They have, they have some workable programs. I just don't, I look at for the amount of land it is and I look towards the future, how sustainable is this type of housing? For the amount of cost that Emerald Village was per unit, I think you could still work and try to be able to get more sustainable type housing than what they were providing there. So there's some stuff that can be done and, and, you know, and with our, you know, local community being able to, you know, find some housing. But I think the one thing is to look at the sustainability.
I understand that and I agree with that. It's just, it's a good start to at least the investigation part of it, finding out what would work for Albany and how can we move that forward with community involvement, with organization involvement, donations from the public, businesses being involved. You know, the homeless issue directly impacts businesses downtown and all over the city. Maybe businesses would be helped be a part of that solution. I know the city solutions team you guys came up with, I had never heard of that until I went to the Salvation Army meeting and it was really interesting to me.
Yeah, so, okay, all right, anything else, Alex?
Okay.
Okay, Mike?
Marilyn, you have my time off request, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I got one more thing.
No, go ahead, he's got one more thing.
So I'm gonna miss the next, I'll be late for the next CARA meeting because we're short umpires. And I have a game at San Antonio Christian High School. We're just out of umpires. So I'm the last ditch. I'm the last guy they put on the schedule, so.
There won't be any ball games down at Bryant's Park for a while.
I know. Well, San Antonio Christian was underwater the other day, so.
So maybe it'll be canceled. Could be a while, I mean, it's gonna be a while before Bryant's Park.
No, they're gonna have water polo down there. They're moving it down there.
That's true.
So you, I'm good. So you do have my, okay.
Yep.
Thank you for that. One thing on this conversation that I'd like to say is I don't understand why the very small percentage of people that are homeless take a giant amount of funds away from, huh, let me think, Maple Lawn and other places, because these individuals can't seem to take care of themselves. So I get kind of callous, because we're taking resources that are few away from other places where people are trying to better themselves through working and are not, for lack of a better term, a burden on society. And it's troubling that we spend this much time and energy and effort when we could be directing our efforts to something else. Seattle's tried it, San Francisco's tried it, Portland's tried it. They've all tried it. And what they've done is they've created a larger problem than what they had to begin with by enabling a few to set the agenda for the many. And I find that troubling. So that's my sole prize.
And the few of that population, it's key, it's not reducing the numbers.
Right, no.
So it is, it is growing.
Well, I guess I would stress again, that is a small portion of the homeless. It is not, you know, because someone says homeless, as I tried to say the other day was misunderstood, 'cause I didn't say it well enough. That's only one or two groups out of the six or seven, I mean, that, that are homeless. And it's the, it's the drug addicted people, alcohol and drug addicted, and some of them mentally ill. And then there's the group of people that just would absolutely not abide by any rule, that's just in their head. But all the rest of them are just trying to get along. And I don't have a problem helping those individuals that are trying to help themselves. They're down on their luck.
Right.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. But other than that, I get a little irritated.
Well, watching that Seattle is dying video, there was one person that forty-three convictions or forty-three arrests. And he's throwing bikes through windows and tipping over trash cans. And he admitted, I'm a drug addict, I'm a drug addict. And they couldn't lock him up. So making the police officers impotent in those situations really bothered me. Coming from a family, my mother was a police officer. When somebody's throwing, attacking people consistently, doing that, that needs to be dealt with. That is a police issue. If somebody's down on their luck, that's a societal issue. Let's help this person get services. But when you have a person consistently committing crimes and nothing happens, it's gonna create more of an opportunity for somebody else to do the same thing. They're gonna exhibit the same behavior because the police officer retired in Seattle because he felt helpless.
Yeah, I got the impression the problem was the judges and the prosecutors, that they just weren't running them through the system. They were just.
Just let them go. Just let them go.
But a part of it is from the decriminalizing meth and heroin too, from the twenty seventeen legislative session. The reason they decriminalized it, because what was happening was taking so much court cost and there wasn't the jail bed space to put, you know, put folks that were under the meth and heroin. So they lessened it to a misdemeanor and our property crimes have gone up in Albany and all over Oregon. And they even talked about that in Seattle then, was the decriminalizing of meth and heroin. And that's why it has really exploded so much. I was hoping there could be a bill this legislative session to try to reverse that. And, you know, I talked to some of our legislators, can you be able to, you know, put this on the plate? At least get a discussion going. If it doesn't get passed this session, at least do it for the next session. But it is, I think a lot of cities need to really come strong to get this reversed back at the next session.
Put the suppliers, put the suppliers in jail for ten, fifteen years and they'll start showing up less and less. Give them a hard time. I'm sorry I'm saying that, but.
No, you're not.
The supply has to be severed. In war, the first thing they wanna get rid of is supply lines. If they can't fuel their tanks, they can't kill us. Let's deal with the supply. Have the task force, we have a police task force, I hope, that would go after the supply. Listen, I'd rather spend money on the supply, getting rid of the supply, that starve those people from that drug. And they'll leave or they'll get help. But we have to deal with the supply. The demand is always gonna be there. We have to deal with the supply. And police officers with the inability to go out and stop the supply is gonna keep coming. Somebody's gonna make the drugs. We have to deal with the supply line.
You wonder how many of them get started on perfectly legal OxyContin and that kind of stuff.
Don't get me started on medications. Don't even get me started on medications.
Medical people and their.
I have cases, I can show you of medications that, you know, my business is seniors. And some of the things that I see prescribed to seniors, it makes my bones hurt. I mean, I've met with pharmacists, I've met with many people about.
Those pharmacists are under pressure from above.
No, I'm not arguing with you. I'm not arguing. The system is broken.
I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, the system is broken. You know, I have, I posted on my Facebook, one of my clients had a prescription with three pills by themselves individually in a plastic bottle with seventeen dollar cocaine. But the package it showed up at her house in a mail order, it was a hundred dollars, three pills. You know, we, our pharmaceuticals supply, our legal drugs is absolutely out of control and we have to get it fixed.
Yeah, my son-in-law had a hip replaced. They gave him this big bottle of OxyContin and he took it all. And he had a hell of a time getting off. Fortunately, I had my daughter to really put the pressure on him to get off that stuff.
But people have to be responsible for their own actions, too.
I agree, Bessie, Counselor Johnson, I agree. I agree, Counselor Johnson. But what happens is, and it's happened in my family, somebody breaks a hip, breaks an ankle, plant a spork, and they have this nagging knee pain. And they take codeine, they take acetaminophen, and it's just not enough sometimes. They aggravate it going down the stairs. Then they go get the next drug and then the next drug. And next, before you know it, they can't function without it. It's just, it's a cycle that needs to be stopped, the supply. And the illegal drugs on the streets with police officers and the sheriff and the task force needs to go after the supply and punish them. Put them in jail.
Oh, yeah, for over prescribing and things like that, yeah.
You know, if illegal drugs is the problem, which it is, we've just talked about that with Seattle and San Francisco and San Antonio and other cities, we need to stop and innovate the source. We need to find the source and put it out.
I do know doctors now are really pushing towards.
There is some of that going on.
Instead of.
Can we get Captain Heinrich to come up and give us kinda chapter and verse of what the process is?
I'll just make a point about what doctors are really trying to get people away from the prescription, you know, meds is now ICE. So I literally, off of my accident and the two surgeries, I had ICE. I would not use that medicine. And I thought I was more worried about what would it do to my liver and kidneys.
Right.
But I tell you, ICE is a great way to treat pain on that. But I'm glad the doctors are pushing more towards ICE. They give you an ICE machine that, you know, like hooks up to shoulder. And we went through a heck of a lot of bags of ICE this summer, but I tell you, it was worth it, so. Yes, Captain? You're probably like wondering, like, what do you want me to say?
Well, what I think I would just tag on to is there have been a lot of changes in the prescription drug field as far as legislation that keeps doctors from over prescribing. And there's a lot of systems in place now to keep people from having ten doctors and getting ten prescriptions. So there's been a lot of work on that front, thank goodness. It's about twenty years too late, but they're getting on top of that. So that has changed. So as far as the prescription drug problems, I think Oregon's starting to get on top of that. I don't think it's completely solved, but it's twice, three times as good as it was.
So have you seen, Captain, right, have you seen that when somebody gets prescribed those big numbers of pills, that they sell them?
Absolutely.
That's one of the problems. We need the volume of.
And they have.
Rained it in.
Rained that in quite a bit. In fact, I just heard this week, there's a gentleman that I'm aware of in town that he finally had to go out and get a job because the doctors reduced his prescription to the point that he has none to sell anymore. So he's got a job. He's been employed for two weeks, so.
Wow.
Good.
So yes, that's in the works. That's, that is happening. And as far as attacking or going after the distribution, that's really all we do. We don't go out looking for users, period. I mean, we bumble into them. When we stop somebody in a car and they have drugs on them or we search them and they have drugs, I mean, we deal with it.
Right.
But we do not actively go out and look for users, because that's not the problem. That's really not what's driving the boat. You know, we arrest users when we find them with drugs.
Committing crimes.
We don't ignore that, but we don't go out looking for that. Our detectives, our drug task force, they go out and look for suppliers. The problem with that. The problem with that is it's all about money, and if there's, if there's a demand, someone will step in to take up that supply route. And so, that's a challenge. And, and with prisons reducing beds and less money in the system to pay for treatment and whatnot, there's not a huge punishment even when you do catch those people. But, that doesn't mean we don't still go that direction, but it is...
I know it's, I know it's a challenge, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you guys working hard to do, to stem the tide. It's just, it's aggravating, you know, being somebody that, that, you know, listening to the budget talks and things like that, when, you know, middle school has, or baby school have to go away, or possibly go away, when we have drugs flowing through the city, that it's just, it's just distressing. So, thank you for sharing.
Tell them the makeup of the task force.
The makeup of our task force?
Yeah.
Right now, we have Albany Police, Lynn County Sheriff's Office, I believe, well, we have Oregon State Police. I wanna say we have a Lebanon detective in Sweet Home part-time. And then we have, the National Guard has, we have an analyst, a techie from the National Guard on our group as well.
DEA?
Not full-time, but yeah, DEA is involved at top, at times.
So, does anybody from Corrales help out with that, or do they have their own task force?
We don't have anybody from Corrales on the Lynn County Drug Task Force.
Okay, so it's by county then, okay.
Yeah, we work with Corrales and Benton County frequently, but they're not on the team, so to speak.
What's the budget for that gang?
For the Drug Task Force?
You say gang.
That's a good question. Their budget is very, in fact, I don't know that they have a budget because they utilize money, they utilize money that comes from seizures for to, for operation, and then the personnel are paid by each agency. So, Albany Police funds two positions on the drug team, so two of our police officers work on the team. I think Lynn County has two...
Full-time?
Full-time. So, each agency participates, so some of the money obviously comes out of our budget, but their, their working capital, so to speak, their funds, anything they need to buy, I think comes out of the seizures.
Couple, three hundred thousand or something.
Well, when you add up all the positions, I mean, they...
No, I mean for the two Albany guys.
Is what?
Probably a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, you're probably a hundred and fifty thousand each with benefits. I mean, when you talk about benefits...
Existing staff, it's not the only thing you're working on.
Right.
Yeah, it's existing. It's like just belong, staff that's involved in another committee.
And you make that up with stuff that you seize?
We, it doesn't fund the positions, they don't seize enough currently to fund the positions, but they seize enough to fund for equipment. So, if they need special equipment or vehicles, it pays for that.
So, the person you accuse, he doesn't get his stuff back?
Uh, depends on the situation. Sometimes it gets forfeited through the court, and sometimes it doesn't. But, it all depends on the circumstances, up to the courts.
I've heard some sad stuff.
We don't have too many sad stories.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a joke.
You know, you know, seeing this, though, I, I remember in middle school and high school, talking about, you know, here in Albany, talking about the kind of the war on drugs and basically how it needs to be able to get the suppliers of drugs. It has been an issue all of us have seen in our lifetime, and will we ever see a totally solution and, and totally diminished in our lifetime? I really don't know what the answer can be, because even like you said, Captain, if, if you catch a person that's stealing, somebody else is gonna pick up that job because they're making some money out of it. So, you know, the overall solution to, you know, to be able to get drugs to go away, I mean, I think a lot of it, too, is, is the users. If there wasn't the users there, then there wouldn't be demand for the suppliers to supply them the drugs. But sadly, those numbers aren't decreasing, it's increasing, and I don't know what the solution is.
I got one comment, the one word that, just go to Singapore. Just go to Singapore.
Yeah.
They don't have a drug problem.
No.
No.
They don't have those problems at all.
You say something bad, they take and beat you.
Yeah.
So, there is a solution.
I've got stories, trust me, of Singapore.
I don't know, but I like that one.
There is a solution.
Hopefully, though, will be something we'll see in our lifetime.
You don't chew gum.
So, Mike, that was your item, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I blew it out.
No, we're all kind of...
No, that's good.
Chad, can I thank you, Captain? Okay, so, I did not have anything this evening, and I've probably spoken, or hey, anything? You didn't have anything, staff have anything? So...
Anything from Peter on this trip?
Um, yeah, I've been speaking with him, he's been very interested in what's going on with the flooding, so we've been in touch. We actually had a phone conversation at three o'clock today, and he's been up to speed on things that are going on.
Yeah, thanks for those pictures, of the drawing and stuff, that's...
Yeah, those were really good, except actually the water went up higher, because then I saw one today that the water went over the platform of the stage.
Yes, it did.
Down on T, so, yeah.
I do have a question. How is the legislature coming on outlawing single-family zoning? Are they doing anything on that?
So, that was in, it came through on Facebook. I forwarded it out on my Facebook, but so far, that bill is still moving. I am tomorrow, OPB saw my testimony online, and so they wanted to come and talk about it, so I am meeting OPB tomorrow and giving them a tour. I wanted them to see that we're not a community that's only single-family dwelling, that we have a lot of multifamily dwelling. I extended the invitation to Speaker Kotek, see if she'd like to come along, too, but I did not get a response. There is, there's a couple amendments, which it's very, when we do amendments here with the city, I like them better, we just do a strikeout and a red, and you can see what the text is. But, theirs is you gotta look at their amendment and try to figure out where it was in the first original one. There's a piece in there off of the Second Amendment, I think, I can't remember, is the First Amendment or the Second one? And it really, this one really concerns me, because what it shows is that we, if we don't have water and sewer to an area, that we have to have a remedy in three years.
Really?
Okay? We have the whole Spring Hill area basin that is in septic tanks. So, if somebody wants to put in middle housing, which would be up to a four-plex, and then we're supposed to provide the infrastructure to it, how would we do that?
I mean, funding that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that would be one ugly situation we would have to go through to try to form a huge local improvement district to that whole Spring Hill area to provide sewer to that area. So, there's just, there's things...
So, so, so they would have to eat that cost?
Well, we would, we would not have the money to eat that cost.
Right.
We would have to, we would have to form a local improvement district, and everybody would be assessed, which could amount to thirty, forty, fifty thousand a lot, you know, you never know what that would cost.
Well, what happens, what happens when they, when the majority of people don't want to do it? You have to have, what, eighty percent in order to make it happen?
Um, it's two-thirds, I think within a year, we can impose, so we can still impose it without, without the vote on it. So, I mean, there's some, there's some stuff in that bill that is just being slammed through this legislative session because it's a feel-good bill that they want to look like that they're providing something for the housing crisis. Well, if they're willing to wait three years to come up with a remedy, then it's not so much of a housing crisis, you know, but, so I'm still following the bill, and I don't know how much more we can do unless every one of you wants to advocate and call our local legislators or call the state and tell them that this is a big mistake of this bill.
Do you think it might help send a resolution from us if we don't like it?
Well, they've already had their hearings closed, so now it's just going, it's going to the, I believe it's the Ways and Means, and then from there, it's going to the floor. It would be best to just send off letters to the legislators.
That's a problem with one-party rule in the state for so long.
Well, and our local legislators are, you know, they're not in support of it, that I've had, you know, to talk with.
No, they're not.
So, but it's all driven from Portland, it's the bigger cities.
It's one-party rule in the state of Oregon for so long.
Yeah. So, it's, yeah, it's kind of upsetting on that, but, okay, that was it.